And to join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The clerk would please call the roll of the members.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Urban has excused himself for the evening and we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. In your council packet, we have the council minutes for the October 23, 2017 meeting. If there are no corrections, we will show those as approved as noted.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, we will show those approved as presented. We have a proclamation. Is Mr. Braxmaill, Braxmaill here, if you would join me at the podium? I have a proclamation I'd like to read. To designate the week of December 11 through December 17, 2017, as Senior Driver Awareness Week. Whereas Colorado's aging population grew 29% through 2010 through 2015, with citizens aged 65 and over projected to rise by more than 508,000, an increase of 68% by 2030. And whereas the Colorado Department of Transportation survey of older adults and adults with disabilities found that 78% of rural and 65% of urban respondents drove themselves in 2014, citing that driving a car gives them a sense of independence. And whereas, while older adults tend to drive safely and are more likely than younger adults to wear a seatbelt, take shorter trips, and limit their driving, adults ages 65 through 84 are overrepresented in the percentage of vehicle crashes involving death or serious injury. And whereas, a number of organizations in Colorado, including the Colorado Department of Transportation, the Occupational Therapy Association of Colorado, Drive Smart Colorado, Drive Smart Evergreen, the Reaching Older Adult Drivers Program, the Older Drivers Coalition, the American Automobile Association of Colorado, the American Association of Retired Persons Colorado, CarFit, the Fitness to Drive Community of Participation, and the Strategic Action Planning Group on Aging, all support and seek to improve older driver safety. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor and the City Council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, in recognition of this designation, do hereby proclaim December 11 through 17, 2017, as Senior Driving Awareness Week, and promote understanding of the importance of mobility and transportation to ensuring senior adults remain active in the community by bringing attention to different aspects of senior driver safety. In witness therefore, in this 11th day of December, 2017, I have affixed my signature and the seal of the city, and I'd like to give this to you.
Thank you very much.
And do you have?
Yes, thank you. My name is Hank Braxma. I work at the Seniors Resource Center, which is here in Wheat Ridge. This proclamation was the work of the Colorado Older Driver Safety Group in recognition of the great majority of seniors who continue to drive. Former Mayor Gretchen Servini asked me to remind you she is still driving. The work that I do is for the people that don't drive, and I also am here to represent the Jefferson County Local Coordinating Council, which is under the auspices of the Aging Well Project in Jefferson County, and we work together in coordination and collaboration with stakeholders and users and funders, just to make sure seniors can still get around. Thank you so much for this recognition.
Okay, our next order of business will be citizens' right to speak, and the sign-up sheets are coming forward. Okay, this is citizens' right to speak. The first speaker will be Mark Bowman. Vivian Voss will be on deck.
Mark Bowman, 3560 Chase Street. Thanks for allowing me a few minutes to chat with you tonight. I would like to request that the city discuss a topic of accessory dwelling units again at a formal study session or some formal venue like that. I do believe there is interest among the residents in Wheat Ridge to amend the code to allow accessory dwelling units, and the topic's been discussed the last three or four years on and off, probably longer than that. I've been a resident for almost four years now. I wanted to run through a little bit of a history of the discussion of ADUs. Back in December of 2015, Ken Johnstone presented a memorandum to the Planning Commission that had lots of good information on ADUs in it. From there, there were several public meetings that were held on the topic of accessory dwelling units. The city staff put together a lot of good information on the pros and cons of ADUs, which generated a lot of good discussion in the community. Those two meetings culminated in a discussion at a study session on June 6 of 2016, and I just want to read the outcome of that discussion. And again, lots of good questions and interaction at that study session. But there was a consensus to direct staff to continue to do research on ADUs and look for opportunities for citizen input through district meetings and online surveys before drafting the code than moving to public meetings. So that was in June of 2016, so 18 months ago. So I know there's been a lot that's happened since then. We had the storm this summer that was, you know, a big distraction for the city, I think. But again, I would like to request that the city formally discuss accessory dwelling units at a study session or some sort of meeting like that, so we can get that discussion going again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Our next speaker is Vivian Voss, and Dorothy Archer is on deck.
Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. I would like to have a conversation for my edification as well as the public's edification on, two weeks ago, November 27, city council meeting, decisions, resolutions, and motions. Number seven was for Barker-Rinker SeaCat architect, and an amount was awarded for Anderson Park renovation, and then number eight, motion to award a contract for professional services. And to my knowledge, as I was listening to discussions, it seemed that both of those were using II funds, and I've not gone to the treasurer's website reporting to see if those are even, those two amounts are even on there at this time to know that for sure. But my question would be, are those two amounts for those two purposes using II funds from the sales and use tax revenue 2017A? I have the official statement in front of me, and just reading generally, the project, Anderson Park renovation, shows no concept that money for renovation design and construction documents are part of the project. And then this overall reaching technical services from AECOM, I'm not sure how that applies to any of the use of the money that's been for the projects. So I just would like some clarification. I did try and do some research myself today, was unable to find anything specifically that I was looking for on the webpage, and reached out and didn't get any answers back. It was a little short notice as I started that this morning. But those would be my questions, and if we could get those addressed yet tonight or something made public, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much, Ms. Voss. Our next speaker is Dorothy Archer, and Bob Bezel or Bezell is on deck.
My name is Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street. I'm here again to address the 35-foot billing allowance. First, I would like to address the comments made about lawsuits. I believe it was about two weeks ago. I'm not quite sure who's going to be sued. I can remember my backyard adjacent to Ms. Davis's family property, quite a few acres left open, maybe 25 years ago. It was zoned for single-family and duplexes. Claire Trailer, at that time, who was filling in for her husband, procured HUD money already. It was presented to city council in a very short period of time. The whole zoning was changed. The whole master plan for that area was changed, and three three-story HUD units were put in that place. I don't remember anybody getting sued. We ate it, we did it, it's worked. I also want to address the fact that many times it has come up by different council members, that we have to think about raising some of these houses, so it will encourage people to come into Wheat Ridge. I've yet to see a house that stays on the market in Wheat Ridge much longer than a week or two. The four in my neighborhood, and I've said this before, I'll state it again, that have sold in the last three years have all been to millennials. The last one that sold at 1,300 square feet sold for $440,000, and they bid up on it. I don't know why we have to raise anything and put three stories up to encourage anybody to come into Wheat Ridge. We like who we are. R1C, R, Zone 1 and Zone 2. We would like that 35 feet to be eliminated. 25 feet with a slope roof, not a 15-foot bulk plane, that's another half a story. I live on 36th Marshall Street. I have a 60-foot frontage and 3 1/2 feet on each side of my house, built before we had a code, as many of them in East Wheat Ridge were. Once you start this 35 feet, it's done. The affordable, if that's what you want to call it, housing is over. I don't know if you object to what's happening to North Denver. I do. I'm not against 35-foot houses, but then buy your own 10 or 15 or 20 acres, start your own community, and make them all 35 feet. And there are some. North Sheridan has a beauty, but those are million-and-a-half-dollar houses. If we are addressing a need for affordable housing as the whole city of Denver, time and time again, then leave us who we are. Once you start that scraping, if you have the 100-foot, you have enough for a duplex, each side in North Denver selling for $600,000 each side. Is that affordable? I can't even afford to buy my own house right now if I had to. I'm asking you, please, when this comes up for study session, you need to take into consideration those of us who like Wheat Ridge the way it is. We've lived here for many years. Young people are coming in because they like the feeling. Leave it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Archer. Our next speaker is Bob Bezell, and Anne Milan is on deck.
Yeah, Bob Brazel, 3830 Carr Street. I'm going to talk similar with the last lady talked about, this bulk plane thing. I went down to the city and got the bulk plane thing with the 15-foot and the 45-degree and all that, you know, and they sent around a survey, and I'm not a dumb person, but I couldn't understand what the heck they were talking about in their survey. It was poorly, poorly written. So I just took out my old graph paper, being an old machinist, and I dropped this 35-foot bulk plane on a 50-foot lot, and it's ridiculous. You don't come to a point at the top, it's too high, you're not correcting any of the problems that people have been irritated about with these three-story houses. If you're, you know, so I guess got to think, and most lots in Wheat Ridge where I live in R2 are R1 or 75-foot lots, and we have a 35-foot height. So if you're going to make these people on these dinky little 50-foot lots, then you need a portion, the height, according to the width of the lot. So if you take a 50-foot lot compared to a 75-foot lot, then you need to take 66% of that 35-foot, and you come out with a 23, a little under 23 and 1/2-foot height limit. That's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bezell. Our next speaker is Anne Milan.
I'm Anne Milan. I'm at 3555 Chase Street.
Please talk into the microphone.
3555 Chase Street.
Thank you.
I'm also here to discuss the issue of ADUs. I'm a new resident to Wheat Ridge. I am of the younger generation, and I support the growth of that kind of dwelling unit. I think it would allow us to sort of address this affordable housing issue in a very simple way. I myself live in a property which has what I believe would be an ideal example, that could be the perfect carriage house rental property, ADU. I'd be happy for any of you to come see it. It would be a really wonderful opportunity for income personally for myself. It really doesn't intrude on my neighbors. The previous owners did have guests come and go. They never had problems with noise violations or complaints. And I also have a very personal relationship with my aging parents, so I think this is a really important solution for people who are going to need to house family members. And we do have smaller homes in Wheat Ridge, and they're not always built or designed so that people can have their separate lives, and ADUs would really allow for that. So I'd like to ask you guys to just sort of consider these issues as, you know, we do have aging generations coming and the new generations coming in. This is a really great solution for both of those, and I'd just like to please ask you to consider it and do some more research and allow the issue to continue to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Milan. That's all of the folks that we have signed up to speak under citizens' right to speak. Is there anyone else that would, Mr. Tuttulio, would you like to come and speak?
Thank you. I'd like to address Ms. Voss's comments. The $895,000 was approved by city council last month, is available. That's II funds, they'll be used for those four projects. The professional services will be reflected in the December of 2017 financials within each project line item account. So the funds haven't been allocated, they were allocated by council at the last meeting, I believe, but they haven't been spent, so they're not going to be reflected until they're actually in the II report, when that money is allocated and spent towards those projects. So in December of 2017, they'll be, they'll reflect it as II funds, and then right now, because I had mentioned, because of staffing issues, we're at September right now, 2017, on the II and other, all of the other financials. So we're missing October and November, and those will be done shortly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tuttulio. Is there anyone else that would like to speak under public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion, and why don't we move to approval of the agenda, or any changes to the agenda from the council? Seeing none, we'll call the agenda approved as presented and move to item number one. Ms. Dozeman, would you introduce that for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 19-2017, an ordinance for second reading, amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding Small Cell Commercial Mobile Radio Service Facilities. Issue during the 2017 Colorado State Legislative Session, the legislator adopted and the governor signed House Bill 17-1193 pertaining to small cell wireless service infrastructure. As it pertains to local governments, the bill does two significant things. One, makes such facilities a use by right in all zoning districts, and two, allows them to locate in public rights-of-way and on utility and traffic signal poles in those locations, and in public utility easements with some limitations and subject to city review and approval. City Council adopted local regulations on June 12, 2017, pertaining to the design parameters and approval processes for such facilities. An amendment is necessary to the definition of small cell facility to eliminate the potential for any large cellular facility to be considered a small cell facility.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dozeman. I would like to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
We do. Our city attorney will provide a report.
Thank you, members of council. I'm preparing this report or providing it in Ken's absence tonight, but I did do this, worked on this ordinance, and I'm happy to give the report. Pardon me, a couple of things. As was pointed out in the reading of the issue, largely the city addressed these issues on CMRS facilities, telecom, and small cells at the June meeting when an ordinance was put in place. And you'll notice tonight's ordinance is pretty short, it's just amends that definition. Attached to tonight's ordinance is the June ordinance that basically gives you the structure of the telecom antenna regulations that the council adopted in June, and that'll be important for a point I want to make in just a minute. But tonight is just the definition, and the definition that was adopted in June has two parts to the definition of small cell CMRS facility. The first one is a personal wireless facility defined by the Telecom Act, and then there's a longer definition that talks about, you know, how large these little packages are, et cetera, three cubic feet in size, et cetera. The mistake, I spent some time with Ken Feldman, who's an attorney in Colorado that represents a, does a lot of work in this area and advises a lot of cities on this subject, and turns out the legislature, we just copied this definition from the state statute, well, legislature inappropriately included item number one, because when you go to the federal telecom act, that's basically any cell tower. So it could be the tower right next to city hall here, that monster tower there. Now, obviously, that wasn't what any of us were intending, and I don't think the legislature either intending to allow as a use by right halfway down the block on Taylor Street somewhere. And everyone agrees that that needs to get fixed, so it's a pretty narrow minor fix tonight to just delete that language, and we're good. So tonight is just that change. I can tell you that the Planning Commission has recommended approval. They met on December 7, and they recommended approval. You do have one person here, Liz Walker's here from AT&amp;T, and I've worked with Liz in other jurisdictions before, and she's signed up, and I encourage you to hear from her. She's raised one additional issue that I know has come up in all of the cities that have been regulating small cells, and let's remember what that was about, that's putting these facilities on exist, primarily on existing utility poles and other poles in the right-of-way. The state legislature has said that's a use by right, so it's not available to the cities. I think you know to say no to that. The ability is to say yes with conditions, and what are the conditions in terms of height and location and design, things like that? And all of that is in the present ordinance that's attached, as attachment to, to the short ordinance here. One of the issues that AT&amp;T has raised, and I'm sure we'll hear, I know that Liz will address it, is, well, how high above that utility pole can the small cell project? And what the city's present ordinance says it's two feet. The industry has kind of pushed back on that in a lot of jurisdictions, saying that isn't enough, given the, and Liz can articulate it better than I can, the manufacturer specifications when they go out and buy this stuff. And I'll leave it to Liz to describe what that is, but the bottom line is that in other cities, they've been asking for a few more feet than that. And I can tell you what other cities have done. Carter Springs, Greenwood Village, a number of others are at four feet above the existing utility pole. Limited, however, and there are ordinance, and I wouldn't change this, by the maximum height in that zone district. If you're already at the max height, then that's too bad. If you're six inches below the max height, then you've got six inches. Understanding that you can put these small cell facilities, it's more costly, inside of other poles, and we talked about that too, taking out a utility pole and putting in a fake utility pole that's got a lot of stuff inside it. So there are a lot of options, but I do have some understanding of the industry's concern about the limitations with two feet, and I'm not sure that anyone has done that. The ordinance title tonight, and I'm sorry for this long explanation of what would otherwise be a short ordinance, the ordinance title is an ordinance amending the ordinance concerning small cells. So the title is clearly broad enough for you to do whatever you would like here. I think your choices are probably three. Leave it the way, you know, leave the height issue the way it is, adopt the change to the small cell, and you're fine. Make the change to the definition and change the height, when I can point that out to you where it is in the long ordinance, but you'd be changing from two feet to some other number. And really, I think that's probably two. I will tell you that the city has a variance process for any numeric standard, and you're probably aware that you can get these small cell permits are administrative to begin with. If that's denied, you can ask for an administrative variance of up to 50%. So if we're at two feet now, that means you'd be able to get another foot, then you'd be able to get three. If we change our ordinance to say three feet, you'd be able to get a foot and a half, that would get you all together at four and a half, and it's just math, and you can see what the effect of that is. So there is that outlet. There's also the Board of Adjustment, if you don't like what you get from the staff, and all of that would fit within the 90-day shot clock that the federal law requires. Sorry to take all this time, but I think it's probably fair to say that this industry is, continues to evolve, and cities continue to adjust their regulations in response, and sometimes in partnership, to be very honest, with the industry, because we all need to make sure we're on our cell phones. So with that long history, I'm happy to take any questions. You can then take testimony from Liz, and then I'm happy to help you through any changes, any action you want to take.
I was actually going to go to Ms. Walker next. So we have one speaker signed up, Liz Walker. Would you please come and to the podium?
My name is Liz Walker. My address is 7436 South Ivy Way, Centennial, Colorado, 80112. And like Mr. Dahl said, I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T, and I know you have a lot to do tonight, so I'll be as brief as possible. At first, I want to thank Mr. Dahl, who responded to our outreach regarding the code, and we appreciate his willingness to discuss the issue that we're concerned with tonight. The provision that we're concerned with is the provision that states that the small cell facility shall not exceed two feet above the light pole, traffic signal, or other facility or structure, and that's from your code. Our concern is twofold. It's a practical concern, technical infeasibility with respect to antenna sizes, and also it presents a conflict with the state law and the law that you've adopted tonight, because that defines a small cell antenna as one that could fit within an imaginary enclosure of no more than three cubic feet. So there, you're presuming an antenna up to three cubic feet for a small cell antenna, but the limitation for the attachment area... but the limitation for the attachment area would be two feet or less than that, because if you have a two-foot limitation, you're going to have to reduce the antenna size to probably about a foot, because there's cable connections that come down that are going to have to fit in that attachment area. And so it's just, it's not a sufficient size. And I was really happy to hear about the variance process. I think that's a great solution, because the design of these networks in unique areas, especially in Wheat Ridge, is going to require flexibility of design. So the engineer's going to pick the antenna that's going to work the best for that area. And that's what you want with infrastructure installations, you want to maximize the performance of each site that you're putting up. So an arbitrary, you know, if you had to put a one-foot antenna in ev, in every small cell, you're not getting the most out of that facility. So you're limiting the foot size, but you might be adding a small cell somewhere else, because that one that we've just put up is not performing to maximum, to the maximum that it could, because of the size limitation. So, and then we also have the, like I said, the conflict with the state law that provides for a three-foot imaginary enclosure of the antenna to fit in there. So our request, like Mr. Dahl said, is just an increase to five feet. We've seen that in a lot of jurisdictions. That allows for flexibility, and it accommodates installation of an antenna that's more typical for the typical installation. So thank you mu, so much for your consideration of this request tonight, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you much, Ms. Walker. If you would sort of stand by, I would like to open it up for questioning of Mr. Dahl or Ms. Walker, if we have questions of council. Anyone have a question? Ms. Hoppe.
Mr. Dahl, do you know when we were originally drafting, why we chose the two-foot maximum to start with?
I think that what we were looking at, the planning department, or with the planning department, was, was sort of not wanting to have utility poles look a lot different than utility poles when these things were on them. And the idea was, gee, what, I think, Ms. Walker points out, the antenna's sort of a three cubic feet, there, there is that definition of it in terms of its size. But we were also thinking of, all right, how much, how much is it going to make that pole look like a bigger pole? And that adds visual clutter that we have a reason to kind of keep a constraint on. And I agree that, that, that's probably not really well-coordinated with the cubic foot definition, but the main thing we were thinking about, to answer your question, was the visual appearance of a, of a light standard, and now it's getting to be a bigger one, and sort of how, how big is too big? And the city ended up fairly conservatively, admittedly, at two feet.
You want to follow up?
So, I just want to make sure I have this clear. So visually, if you're looking at a stoplight, and at the corner post of the stoplight, currently, we can put a two-foot antenna on top of that. So then the stoplight center post, not the cross post, would be two feet taller. And if we changed it to five, three, four, five, six feet, it would be that much more higher on the top of that stoplight, correct?
Potentially could be, yes. All kind of depends on design, and I think when we discussed last time, lots of potential designs out there, and you conceivably locate most of your stuff lower, but you want the antenna up, or maybe you build the antenna into the pole, and, and now you've got all sorts of feet of antenna within the pole. That's more expensive. I, I do get it that manufacturers are now starting to put out, because this industry's starting to get going, manufacturers are now starting to put out their, their product. And they're responding to regulatory environment, but also to people buying from them, and so that, not all the products would work inside of a pole, and I think we're getting that pushback.
Thank you, Mr. Pond.
Maybe this is an extension of the question or clarification, and it may involve a question of the, of Ms. Walker, but I recall, as we're talking about this, that we're assuming that this is a pole mounted somewhere below the top of pole, and worse, and where our statement was, we didn't want it projecting above top of pole more than two feet. However, what I hear you stating, Ms. Walker, is that, that you want, it sounds like all of this to be above the top of the pole, or the, all of the working part, and therefore you see that the three foot that's allowed by the state, you know, you want it all to be above the top of the pole, is that correct?
Yes, in the ti, in an attachment design, where you're attaching to existing infrastructure. And of course, the benefits of that are use, use of existing infrastructure, which is, is something that cities typically encourage, because it doesn't add new, new vertical, a new vertical element to the right-of-way. So in an attachment, you would be attaching it to the top of the pole, right? And it, and it would be, if you have three feet of space, you wouldn't have three feet of antenna, because of the cabling that goes underneath it. I hope that answered your question.
Well, it, it does largely, I just want to confirm that the mounting styles that, that we're talking about, you don't have some sort of pole mount that's below the top of the pole that, that holds on to an antenna. Your intent, your, the pole mounts that you're talking about are starting at the very top of the pole.
Okay, let me, yes, there is a side-mounted design that I've seen, and I don't, I think aesthetically, the top of the pole looks better than the arm coming out and going up, but that's just, that's just me.
I appreciate it, but you are confirming that there's actually multiple ways of mounting that.
Yes, you could do a pole, you could do a side-arm coming out and going up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald.
So, Mr. Dahl, am I, am I correct that what you're thinking about here is Section 1, Part 2, Number 1, each antenna is located inside an enclosure of not more than three cubic feet, or are you talking about something entirely different?
I'm talking about the restriction on height. If you go to Attachment 2 in your packet, Attachment 2 to the, to the packet, I guess, which is the ordinance Number 1621, series of 2017. It's a multiple-page ordinance, go in about six pages. I apologize, it's not paginated, but it would be the page that's all caps, and about halfway down the page, it says letter B, height. If you find that.
I'm getting there.
Okay. When you're there, I can point you to it. That's B. It's actually this.
Is 29?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see if I can do it this way.
So I just want to be, find a page that's, that's nothing but all caps language.
Okay, I got it.
And halfway down, it says height, letter B.
Yeah.
That's, that's the one. All small cell facilities shall extend, shall not extend two feet above the light pole. So sort of however it's configured, if it's built on the side, if it's landed on top, or I will tell you that I have seen pictures of, because Ken Feldman's given them to me, light poles that have completely rebuilt or fabricated, look like a light pole, and it's got all that stuff inside it. So that's an alternate design as well, clearly a more expensive one, but it's an alternate design. But in none of those cases, as, as letter B says, may the antenna extend two feet above the top of the pole to which it's being attached. I think some of those pages might have been out of order in the, in the packet, but if you get to the ordinance and find the page with all caps, you'll find the right page.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Matthews.
The five-foot height, do we have, I mean, that's, this antenna, do we have, can you give us some examples of what the bulk of that is? Is it a five, is it going to be two foot by two foot by up, or is it just going to be a pencil kind of with antenna?
In between there. So there, a lot of them that I've seen are about two feet long, and then maybe five or six or three inches, three to five, six inches wide of, of a diameter, I guess. So.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
In our, Mr. Dahl, in our variance process, do you know the amount, what's the total amount that you could be allowed for a variance? So is it 50%, 33%?
You can get an administrative variance at 50% of a numeric standard, this is very clearly a numeric standard, from the staff. If you want more than that, or if you are, if you get a variance from the staff, and you still don't like the decision you've made, you can appeal the Board of Adjustment, which, you know, has the ability to grant larger variances after a hearing.
So if we were to change the height to five feet, then somebody could get an additional two and a half feet.
Yes, it would. So it's all math. I, I will say that on Ken's behalf, because I've exchanged emails with him, he's mindful of the fact that, that maybe some additional flexibility is, is appropriate here and would not be a, a huge impact to the city. He wasn't in favor of five feet. He said if other people are doing four, I could see that. Understanding that we do have a pretty forgiving or inviting, for lack of a better way of saying it, administrative variance process that lets you add quite a bit of dimension on right off the top, and from a, on a case-by-case basis, that's sort of better design. One thing that concerns me about a, a much larger limitation, that means everything then gets designed to that large limitation, and you're, you're already at that, that limit. And I'm not trying to make things difficult for, for the industry, and that's why I'm suggesting that maybe some flexibility is import, is, is, is acceptable here and, and is recommended. But, you know, if you extended another foot or two, and then they have the ability for a variance in a situation where they, they really need it, then you're, you're accomplishing quite a bit, and, and you're not immediately designing to the, to the, to the upper limit.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, sir. I, I'm at that point where I, I would lean towards Ken's recommendations, and would perhaps choose the compromise between the two and the five and go with four. And that gives them a chance to do things without having to go through the variance process on everything, and gives them the fifth, the last foot if they need it.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Duran?
Can I just confirm? Did you say state law is three feet? Or cubic feet?
The definition of small cell antenna from the state law is, it could fit into imaginary enclosure of three cubic feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Dahl, did you have any language, or are you just expecting us to free-form something and change that to, to a num, a bigger number?
I've got some language here on the recommended motion. Right now, you've got a recommended motion just approving the ordinance. What I would suggest you could add is, in the third line, it says, second line, regarding small cell commercial radio, mobile radio service facilities, comma, with the addition of the amendment of Section 26-615. H, point little b, to amend to whatever you want, let's say four feet in the moment, four feet from two feet. On second reading, and then you're off to the races. Does that, does that work? Little insert right there? That'd be how to do it.
So that was 26-2017?
26-615. H. So if, if I were reading the motion, I'd read the motion as written, and then said, with the addition of, maybe that's just tail it on the end, with the addition of a change to Section 26-615. H, point b, from two feet to whatever you're going to choose. If you add that phrase at the end of the motion that's written in the packet, you're
Mr. Matthews.
I move that we amend the original motion to the language.
We haven't, we haven't received a motion yet.
That's right, we haven't. I haven't waited, we've been discussing them.
You can make the motion, then add that language, and you're good.
Okay, is there any more, is there any more questioning for, for the staff or Ms. Walker? Okay, I'm going to close the, close the public comment section.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You're probably going to want me to assign an ordinance number. This will be ordinance number 1631.
Okay, and just for a point of clarification, when you make that motion, instead of council bill number something, we're going to put ordinance number in there, is that correct?
No, it's, it's still council bill 19-2017.
So for the record, the ordinance number is 1631. Ms. Dozeman, are you prepared to present a motion? Please do.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 19-2017, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws regarding small, small cell commercial mobile radio service facilities, with the addition of amending 26-615. H, point b, to amend four feet from two feet, on second reading, and that it takes effect upon adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis.
Point of order? This is listed in here as already a second reading, and are, so it's not coming back.
This is second reading, correct.
Yeah, but you said on second reading, this is second reading.
Yeah, approval on second reading, she's saying, tonight.
Okay, I get it, thank you.
Good, okay. We have a, a motion to approve Council Bill 19-2017 by Ms. Dozeman, second by Ms. Davis. Do we have discussion upon the motion? Mr. Pond.
I'd like to hear from other people. I'm not opposed to this in a, in a serious way, although I would be more comfortable with three, that was the number that I felt was a little bit more appropriate, still within a variance. It kind of puts us, you know, four feet plus above, above the top of a pole, and I, you know, I think that's, that's starting to get to be quite a bit. So at four, it obviously could be six with, you know, immediately upon administrative review. And I, I would say that, remember, three, if it was unacceptable to be four and a half, could always go to Board of Adjustment for kind of a custom adjustment if necessary. So I, I would prefer three, frankly, but I'm open to other people's conversation.
Ms. Hoppe.
I also was considering three feet when we were discussing it, because of the four and a half, because of the four and a half foot above the pole that's already there. I also considered three and a half, which would get you 1.75, which would give 5.25, but I figured that was a little bit too much, so I'd rather go with three feet.
Ms. Duran?
I also feel comfortable with the three feet, so I am comfortable going in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I just want to say, I'm, I'm okay with the four feet. That would eliminate running for an adjustment as often. I want to facilitate small cells in Wheat Ridge, so I am not opposed to four feet.
Okay, is there other discussion upon the motion? Are we ready to vote upon the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a amendment to the motion.
Okay, amendment to the motion from Ms. Hoppe.
I'd like to amend the motion to read with the addition of 26-615. H, point b, to amend from two feet to three feet.
Second.
Okay, we're talk, we're, we now have an amendment to the motion from Ms. Hoppe, second by Ms. Duran, to essentially change the height from four feet to three feet above the pole. Is there discussion upon the amendment? Mr. Pond.
Just to be clear for the record, I think we're amending the motion, which is at four feet, and the amendment is for three feet.
That's correct. Mr. Matthews.
I'm not sure that, I think we're starting to pick hairs a little bit here. If you've got a 25, 30-foot pole, and you're worried about whether they can build three feet high or four feet high, I doubt any feet high or four feet high, I doubt anyone from the ground is going to see a little pipe up there as a significant difference. And I would, based on that summation, I would, I'm still continuing to be in favor of four feet.
Okay, is there other discussion on the amendment? Okay, would the clerk please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Okay, so the amendment, the first amendment has passed. Are there any other amendments, or are we ready to, or discussion upon the motion? Okay, we are ready to vote on the motion. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walker. We're going to move to item number two. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to introduce council bill number 20 dash 2017, an ordinance approving a radio tower space license agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and DMR Networks Incorporated. At issue in 2016, North Table Mountain was selected as an additional radio communication tower site for the City of Wheat Ridge, the City of Lakewood, and the West Metro Fire Protection District to improve radio signal strength in areas lacking adequate coverage. DMR Networks owns a radio tower site at this location, and have agreed to lease space at the tower site for the purposes of locating and operating Wheat Ridge Police Department radio communication equipment. This ordinance will approve the tower space license agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and DMR Networks Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Pond. I'd like to open the public hearing, and would the clerk please assign a, an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1632.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Yeah, first, our Police Chief Dan Brennan will give a, a quick update on what this issue is, and then Mr. Dahl has some items to add also.
Thank you. Chief Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This agreement tonight is, is part of a number of agreements that the Police Department has entered into with the City of Lakewood and the West Metro Fire Department to build out a radio system backbone or infrastructure. So, a number of agreements that go back to 2005 for radio infrastructure and radio antennas. So, when we made the transition from a Motorola system to a Harris system in late 2005, we entered into an agreement with the West Metro Fire Department that allowed us to loan them five radio frequency channels that we had, and there's, there's a process in place through the FCC to do that, and that allowed us to buy into a quarter share of that existing radio backbone system. We, we didn't have a radio backbone system at that time for this, this new system. Over the years, that, that system has, has grown. Initially, we were relying on the tower that's located at the top of Green Mountain to do our radio coverage, and while that improved our radio coverage, there were still areas in the city that, that weren't, where they needed to be in terms of, of acceptable radio coverage. West Metro then leased space on Mount Morrison, so it really gave us the opportunity to use both sites from a signal strength perspective. So, whichever tower gave a, gave an officer out on the street the best radio signal, that signal would bounce off that tower. There, there has been discussion as this infrastructure has evolved of adding a third site, and this is the site that we're talking about tonight, this North Table Mountain site, and there's a tower there that is owned by DMR Networks. There's space in that tower that we could lease, and allowing the, the, you know, the collaborative partners, Lakewood, West Metro, and us to lease that, actually would allow each of the partners to have responsibility for a specific tower site. So, Lakewood would be responsible for Green Mountain, West Metro would be responsible for Mount Morrison, we would be responsible for this North Table Mountain site, and as you can see from the, the packet, we would actually reduce our total expenses that we have right now in terms of, of the lease, the radio service, services costs, and the, the cost for radio system maintenance. So, that's where we're, we're at. We think this is a really good deal. Right now, we would still have the ability to use all three tower sites, just like West Metro would, and just like Lakewood would. That signal would go to the best site, but it really helps us build out a 911, I shouldn't say 911, a radio system infrastructure that will provide, you know, good radio coverage for both fire, EMS, and law enforcement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think Mr. Dahl wants to update you a little bit on that agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl.
Counsel, as you recall, last meeting, Councilmember Urban raised the question about whether there was the appropriate language on indemnification and insurance, and I answered quickly saying, yeah, it was fine, and then I had to take that back. And sometimes you have to, because in this particular case, the city's not a less or, it's a less E. And for, for that reason, we needed to, to make some changes. We've reached out to the company that has the tower, and, and haven't been able to get to final with them on the, frankly, the few changes we would, we, we need. On insurance, for example, we, we really need to be able to recite the SIRSAP policy as the insurance that we'll provide, as opposed to buying some separate policy, and that's fine. The lease is, as written, is, is more for other commercial vendors or users on a tower. So, there are a couple of things we, we want to be able to do, and we think we'll be able to do. And, and I think we need that before we actually ink the lease. That gives you a couple of choices tonight. You can certainly just approve it the way it is, but, but I think we need to address these things. They're, they're, they're kind of boilerplate stuff, but it's significant if it's going to be a long-term thing, and I think that we should address it. You know, right now, we have service, so it's not like we're waiting to initiate service. The equipment's up, you know, it's, everything's running right now. It's just a matter of where, where we allocate. So, it's not going to change service if we delay. So, in my opinion, your, your choices are to open the public hearing, because it was noticed, take any testimony, I don't think there is any, and then continue the hearing to your January meeting, during which time hopefully we'll have time to get these things resolved with the, the tower operators. Or you could act tonight and approve it with the condition that it be in form approved by the city attorney, and then I'll go out and get these changes. I normally suggest that, but I know it was Councilmember Urban that was interested in this, and he's not here tonight. And I think you'd be able to delay it to January and allow him to participate without any harm to the operations that the Police Department is undertaking. Those are your, your choices.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dahl. We do not have any members of the public signed up. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf of this issue?
Can you open the, did you open the hearing?
I did.
You didn't? Okay, fine, sorry.
Okay, I don't see anyone that's, that's come forth to speak on this, so we will take questions of council for staff. I don't see any ques, Mr. Pond?
Just procedurally, what was the date in January?
January 8th would be the first opportunity.
So, proper motion would be to continue the public hearing on ordinance number, which would be council bill number 20 dash 2017 to the January 8th regular meeting, if you want to go there.
Is there any further, further questions? Ms. Hoppe?
Is that enough time with the holidays coming up?
I think that it is, and if it isn't, I could just ask you to roll over again. I'd rather keep it on a tighter schedule so that everyone knows they need to get it done.
Any, any further questions? A motion is in order?
Thank you. I move to continue council bill number 20 dash 2017 public hearing until the January 8th regular meeting.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Pond, a second by Mr. Matthews, to continue this until the January 8th meeting. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Our third item will be introduced by Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number 21 dash 2017, an ordinance amending 22 dash 66 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding Use Tax Applied to Construction Equipment and Credit for Sales or Use Tax Previously Paid to Another Municipality. At issue at the regular general election held on November 8th, 2016, the electorate of the city approved ballot question 2E, which increased the sales and use tax levied by the city by one-half of 1% to 3.5% of the purchase price. Therefore, it is necessary to amend the Code of Laws to implement this electoral decision. City Council approved ordinance number 1614 on February 27th, 2017. However, two code provisions in section 22 dash 66 were not changed to reflect the voter approved tax increase to 3.5%. This proposed ordinance makes the appropriate change.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe. I would like to open the public hearing, and will the clerk please provide an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1633.
Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this matter?
We do. Heather Geier, Administrative Services Director.
Thank you. Ms. Geier?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There's no formal presentation for you this evening, no PowerPoint, let you off the hook. This is simply and truly a cleanup item. We missed a couple of subsections when we brought this original code update to you earlier in the year. My apologies. If you have any specific questions about these two code sections, we're happy to answer them for you this evening.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone from the public signed up for the, to, for this item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on it? Okay, we will, I see no one ready to speak, so we'll move to council questions, and I believe Mr. Matthews has one.
As I'm going through this, I'm not sure I've caught all the legalese, but is there a sunset on this, that when 2E dies, this dies?
I don't believe we included that. We'll have to come, we'll have to bring this back for amendment. The ballot question allowed the sales tax increase to, to go as long as 12 years or 38 and a half million, whatever comes first. So, once one of those two actions occurs, we'll bring back an ordinance to take it back to 3%.
Why, well, that's, well, why would we not just put that in here, that when we reach those boundaries, this automatically sunsets?
We could. I don't think we did that with the first. Mr. Dahl, do you know? Was that language in the first amendment?
I don't recall.
Yeah.
Just don't recall.
I don't think it was, no. That's an option. We could do that. We'd have to take it back and do it for the other sections, too. This, this, this ordinance tonight doesn't address the original section that was changed from three to three and a half, so.
Additional questions for staff on this item? Mr. Matthews?
Well, then, I, I guess I'm concerned about an extra half percent sales tax or use tax, whatever's, you know, running out there and not being corrected in up to, what, 12 years from now? That's why this is of concern to me, because until we formally take it away, how, does this go on ad, you know, ad nauseam? Is it, or is it tied, is it tied somehow to 2E?
No, it's tied, it's tied to the 2E ballot question. So, once, once we, again, we reach one of those thresholds, 12 years or 38 and a half million, staff at that time will have to bring back an ordinance to, to change it back to 3%.
Hmm.
Yeah, it's not, there's, we didn't put an automatic adjuster in there, so it would have to come back.
That's my concern.
Yeah, I understand.
Is there any additional questions for staff on this? Okay, then we would be ready, a motion would be in order, Ms. Hoppe.
I move to approve council bill 21 dash 2017, an ordinance amending 22 dash 66 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Regarding Use Tax Applied to Construction Equipment and Credit for Sales or Use Tax Previously Paid to Another Municipality on second reading, and that it takes effect upon adoption.
Second?
That was Ms. Duran's second. Okay, we have a motion to approve council bill 2117 by Ms. Hoppe, second by Ms. Duran. Do we have discussion on the motion? Ms. Davis?
I just have one comment to follow up on Mr. Matthews' comments. I mean, I do believe that, you know, if the language had at one point been put in there, I think that's fine, but I do feel that we are managing the 2E funds completely separately, and that it won't be something that just goes forgotten in 12 years or 36 million dollars from now. So, I feel that the way it's written is acceptable, just my thoughts. But I, I understand the concerns, but I feel that we've been very, very deliberate in how we're setting those funds up.
Well, maybe to add, Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Goff?
The ballot question did say that, as I mentioned, that the increase will begin January 1st of this year and end when revenues from such sales and use tax rates increased to 38 and a half or to 28 years. So, that language is in the ballot question, which, is that codified, Mr. Dahl? That actual ballot language? How does that get? So, I mean, it's, it's officially, in an official document, that, I mean, the, the sales tax rate cannot continue to 3 and a half percent after it meets one of those thresholds, because it's, it's in the official ballot language, which was approved and codified.
I don't think the ballot language is not codified. No, it's just what's in 22, it's, it's, it's just in what you, what you see in the, thinking aloud, but it's just in what you see in the sales tax code itself. Let me, let me take a, well, let me take a look. Let's see what we did. Section what?
Section 2256. Hopefully, you got a current one there.
Yeah, we've got, this is brand new. Yeah, right now, it's just this. It's just the rate. And I think it reflects the change. 12, 13, oh, four, 12, 222, 2017, was that?
Yeah, that's, that's when it was done. Yeah. So, yeah, the actual code does not include that qualifier, but it does reference the ordinance that was approved on February 27th of 2017, which refers to the ballot question that says, again, it ends either at 12 years or 38 and a half million dollars. So, Mr. Matthews, yeah, it's, you're correct. It's not, it's not automatic, but it's, it's in the city records that it ends when one of those thresholds is met.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Mr. DiTullio, did you have something that might clear, clear this up?
Well, for reference, the five-year bond for the Rec Center and the five-year bond for the City Hall expansion, those do not have any kind of reference to a date or time for five years. It was similar to what we have here, where it referenced the ordinance, which references the ballot question. So, I can remember that one, because I was on city council, so we've never had a timestamp inside the code for the, what they end, but it references the ordinance, which was approved by the, the voters, and then obviously approved by council.
And in fairness, not to say that you couldn't structure a sunset. The legislature does that all the time, you know, they'll put in the code book that this provision expires as of, and they'll put a date.
Okay.
Here, you'd need to do more than that, because it's a, it's an either-or sunset, you know, it depends either on a date or on an amount.
Okay.
Depending, and you'd, you'd have to, I think it's probably fair for, for you to know and answer Councilmember Matthews' question, that it's, it's something you can write. But it'd just be a little more complicated than the usual sunset.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Are there any other questions on the motion? Seeing no more questions, would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries six to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Thank you. We'll move now to item number four. Ms. Davis, would you introduce this, please?
Thank you. Resolution number 47 dash 2017, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding concerning withdrawal management services by and between Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Jefferson County, and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Westminster. At issue, Arapahoe House is a non-profit healthcare organization.
At issue, Arapahoe House is a nonprofit healthcare organization and provider of treatment for drug and alcohol addiction, had a contract with the state of Colorado to provide withdrawal management detox services at locations in Aurora, Commerce City, and Wheat Ridge until June 30th, 2017. Jefferson Center for Mental Health officially took over these services in Wheat Ridge from Arapahoe House at the end of June 2017. The memorandum of understanding, under consideration for approval, was drafted to establish funding obligations of the local government members that are parties to the memorandum of understanding and the powers and obligations of Jefferson County Mental Health.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report on this? Mr. Goff?
The only thing I would add is that the city's contribution for 2018 will be $30,000, $30,100, and that is in the budget. It will be the same every year after that, plus the growth shown in the Denver Boulder-Greely Consumer Price Index.
Thank you. I have no one signed up to speak on this. Is there any comment from the public that we'd like to make at this time? Seeing none, I will open this up for questions from council. Do we have questions?
Is the motion in order?
There to be no questions. Ms. Davis, the motion is in order.
Okay, I move to approve resolution number 47-2017, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding concerning withdrawal management services by and between Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Jefferson County, and the cities of Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, Lakewood, Wheat Ridge, and Westminster.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Fitzgerald to approve Resolution 47-2017. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppe?
I would just like to remind folks, if you didn't see it during study session, there is a reporting, a men, a reporting requirement, yep, thank you. There's a reporting requirement that is on a quarterly and then an annual basis, the annual one being more detailed, and currently, the amount of money that we are contributing depends on our percent of our population, and therefore, if it does go dramatically down, then we can look at renegotiating that contract. So, we didn't just throw out a dollar number and start spending your money on that, just so you know.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move to item number five. Mr. Duran, would you introduce this for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 46-2017, a resolution approving a dispatcher transition and license agreement with the Jefferson County Communication Center Authority. Issue, effective January 1st, 2018, employees of the Wheat Ridge Communication Center will become employees of the Jefferson County Communication Center Authority. The attached agreement outlines the terms and conditions of the transfer of Wheat Ridge Communication Center employees to JeffCom, as well as the conditions that will allow JeffCom employees to utilize the Wheat Ridge Police Department's Public Safety Answering Point until the transfer of these call takers and dispatchers to JeffCom in 2018.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report on this? Mr. Goff?
Yeah, Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So, as we've talked about this before, this process to regionalize 911 services started about six years ago. We've made a lot of progress in that time, particularly in the last eight months. So, we anticipate JeffCom itself going live in their own building with all eight entities and another 14 service users that are fire departments and police departments sometime in April of 2018. Our transition date has been set for mid-March of this year, and in looking at how we were going to do that transition, it, it didn't make sense to have our employees sign up for benefits with, with the city of Wheat Ridge for the first three months of the year and then sign up for benefits with JeffCom for the remaining nine months. So, in working through the logistics of how do we do this, it made a lot of sense to say, effective January 1st, you know, the employees that work in the Wheat Ridge Communication Center would become JeffCom employees. So, we've worked out both the salary and the benefit piece of that. They've all been offered letters of employment. Those letters of employment have been signed, so they've indicated their desire to move to JeffCom. They've signed up for medical benefits and retirement benefits this past week. So, they're all ready to begin to make that transition. Two of our dispatchers will actually become supervisors. Chris Garimoni, who's been our interim manager, was the supervisor in the comm center, was selected by JeffCom to be a supervisor, and Jessica Coons, who was a dispatcher, had been a previous dispatch supervisor for another agency, was also selected to be a supervisor. They will both be supervisors. They will work with the law enforcement operations manager that is currently at JeffCom to handle any disciplinary issue, complaint issues, those kinds of things, and obviously will have interaction with the director at JeffCom as well as the operations manager. So, this is the first step, or the next step, I should say, in terms of this transition to JeffCom being operational for Wheat Ridge residents sometime in mid-March.
Thank you, Chief Brennan. Is, I have no one from the public signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone in the room that would, that would come forward to speak on this? Don't see anyone, so do we have questions for, for staff on this?
Mr. Mayor? If there's no questions? I would just like to thank Mr. Brennan. He's spent a considerable amount of his time over the last couple of years on this project, and I think we're almost to the finish line, right?
We're getting there.
This is just one piece of it, but this, this regionalization of the center is really going to be an asset to not only Wheat Ridge, but the whole Jefferson County, so it takes a lot of work to stand up a new organization like this. So, kudos to our chief for all the work he's put in.
Thank you. I had one question. What impact, we're losing 15 employees from the city of Wheat Ridge, what, what budgetary impact does this have on us?
It's actually 13 FTEs that we will be losing. We're probably going to come back and ask to keep one of those, because there's still going to be some additional work that still will stay here, potentially answering non-emergency calls and routing those and different things. The chief could speak to that. We are currently projecting to save, I think it's about 685,000, right? You want to speak to it?
Sure, I can, I can help you with it. So, for 2018, we would have budgeted close to $1 million to run that communication center, so that's the employees and all the other associated operating costs to do this. The next item that we have on the agenda is, is actually what our costs next year will be, which will be right around $645,000 and some change. So, that's the difference. We're going to, we anticipate saving in excess of quarter million dollars by making this transition. We also realize that this being a transition year, we'd get two things that we need to be thoughtful of. One is, in moving all of our services over there and some of the ancillary duties that our communication center does, we're going to have to find a way to, to make that work in-house. We don't yet know if that's, that's going to be a person or if it's just going to be some process changes that we need to make. But if you can think of all the phone calls, the 100,000 phone calls that go into that center a year, not all of them are 9/11 calls. A lot of them are calls to say, I need to speak to the chief, I need to speak to Detective, you know, WIF, you know, questions like that, or general questions about, you know, the law or, you know, code enforcement kinds of issues. So, we need to figure out what that transition's going to be. Technology, we might be able to leverage with a phone tree, but we might still have the need to have a person do things like the CCIC, which is the criminal justice database that we use. There are audits required of that. There, there's a warrant piece that needs to be determined how we're going to do that. So, some other moving parts, we're trying to resolve on that, but we anticipate probably saving somewhere in the vicinity of about $300,000 or so, once we get the center up. There may be some additional costs that come with this, too, that we just haven't anticipated yet, so we have a little bit of a buffer built into our budget if, if, if we need those dollars to stand this up. We think we've got a, it's about an $18 million budget for JeffCom, and our share of that's about 645,000.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Any other questions of staff on this item? Then, Mr. Duran, I believe a motion would be in order.
All right. I move to approve Resolution Number 46-2017, a resolution approving a dispatcher transition and license agreement with the Jefferson County Communication Center Authority.
Second.
We have a motion.
Second, sorry.
Got it. We have a motion from Mr. Duran and second by Ms. Hoppe to approve Resolution 46-2017. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number six, Mr. Matthews, would you introduce this for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve payment to the Jefferson County Communications Authority in the amount of $645,747 for E-9/11 call-taking and police radio dispatch services. The issue here is that the police department is requesting authorization of a payment to the Jefferson County Communications Authority, JeffCom, in the amount of $645,747, which is the city's 2018 share of cost for the regional call-taking and dispatch center for police and fire agencies in Jefferson County.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
I think we probably covered it in the last discussion. We can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just, we're asking you to approve the full annual amount tonight, but we will still make these payments in quarter, quarterly payments.
Thank you. I have no one signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone in the room that would like to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to council, council questions for staff. Is there any questions for staff on this? Mr. Matthews, I believe a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve payment to Jefferson County Communication Center Authority in the amount of $645,747 for E-9/11 call-taking and police radio dispatch services.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Matthews and a second by Ms. Davis, Ms. Dozeman, I'm sorry. See, I was writing and not, not listening, so. To approve the payment to Jefferson County Communication Center Authority. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number seven, Mr. Fitzgerald, would you introduce this item?
Item number seven is a motion to appoint elected officials to outside agencies. The background, city representatives are appointed to various agencies at a regular city council meeting by motion. I have two motions. One is, I move to appoint Councilmember Janice Hoppe to Jefferson County School Liaison position with Councilmember Leah Dozeman appointed as an alternate.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgerald, second by Mr. Pond, to appoint Ms. Hoppe to the Jefferson County School Liaison and account, and appoint Councilmember Leah Dozeman as an alternate. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
I, I move to appoint Councilmember Janice Hoppe to the Applewood Business Association.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Fitzgerald, and Mr. Duran, you seconded that? Seconded by Ms. Duran to appoint Ms. Hoppe to the Applewood Business Association. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes the regular business portion of our meeting. We'll now move to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple quick items. The mayor and I met today with a couple representatives from the Jefferson County Library, and they informed us that they will be conducting a long-term facilities study to determine where additional facilities or upgrades may be needed. If you all remember, there was, they were successful in increasing their mill levy a couple of years ago now, I guess, and they now want to conduct a study to look at what needs are in their different communities. So, they're going to be reaching out, they're hiring actually a firm to help investigate that and do some interviews and focus groups in the communities, so we'll be lobbying for some increased improvements to our facilities here in Wheat Ridge. I also sent city council an update, I believe, last week from RTD on the G-line. The RTD met with the Colorado PUC last week in a pre-hearing to lay out the logistics for the formal, formal hearing that they're going to have to consider hopefully opening the G-line and, and the A-line. They've, they've scheduled the hearing for February 15th and 16th. If there's some additional testimony that has to be taken before that, the hearing won't be till March, that same week, 14th and 15th, I believe. But they also, RTD also asked the administrative law judge in the pre-hearing if they could get a decision on resuming testing on the G-line before this hearing, and the judge gave them indication that, yes, he would approve that, and hopefully, we're going to get an answer on that this week, that hopefully, testing can resume on the G-line while we're waiting for this hearing on the safety of the crossing arms. So, it looks like it's, it's still moving forward, hopefully, and hopefully, we'll have a train here sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing, nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, okay. We'll move to elected official matters. Our treasurer, Mr. DiTullio?
Thank you. On your, on the dais, I placed a news release about online sales tax, and this online sales tax affects any city in Wheat Ridge or Colorado that actually has a delivery presence. So, basically, now that some online retailers have delivery of their, of their products by them, the city is required, and they're required to have a business license and to collect sales tax. You'll see that on the online sales. So, rather than me reading this and quoting myself, this is on the website, but I was hoping maybe somebody on city council, except for Godfather Hoppe, could actually read this tonight and, because of her voice, and read this so that our constituents know that. The online sales tax is being done based on the delivery presence and that it's going to happen, it's happening in Arvada and Lakewood, any city that has delivery by the online retailer, so. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Shaver, any?
No, I just, I wanted to, when you were making your announcements prior to the meeting, I wanted to bring up the issue that historically, except for the last four years, the mayor has always asked speakers to spell their last name, and I wondered if we might reintroduce that custom. It was always done, and it just, the last couple of years, it's kind of fell by the wayside, and it's, it's helpful, if we could do that.
You have but to ask, and I will, I will make that note and make that announcement the next time that we have occasion to read this announcement. Thank you. We'll move to counselors. Ms. Duran?
Thank you. I have a question and then an announcement. My first question is, I want us to be mindful that many citizens have come up to ask that we have a study session regarding ADUs and Airbnbs. I know on our, it's on our future agenda, but nothing specific is there, so I'd like us to take a look at either probably February, because January looks like it's pretty full, if we could look at a study session then to kind of have that discussion and at least hear from the public again. Secondly, I'd like to announce that the Senior Resource Center is doing a sock collection for seniors. It's called Toasty Toes, and you can drop off your socks at 3227 Chase Street, and they will be collecting between they will be collecting between now and the end of the year. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Duran. Mr. Matthews?
I'll defer to Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you.
I just wanted to announce that Larry and I are having a District Four meet and greet tomorrow, Tuesday, December 12th, at 6:30 PM at Pietro's Pizzeria on 44th and Field, and so we invite any of our constituents within District Four and Wheat Ridge to come and meet us and talk with us about some of the issues that'll be coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hoppe?
I support the ADU conversation coming up in a study session soon. I guess I would just ask that it, instead of asking for a specific date, I just ask for it be as soon as possible. I know that there's some scheduling stuff, so I would support that if we could get that going. I also wanted everybody to know that the Wheat Ridge Business District, we do grants for facade and sign improvement, landscape and paint for, it's for any business in District, in Wheat Ridge to apply, and we are looking for application, applicants for our board members, and you can go to wearelocalworks.org/business to get directly to the Wheat Ridge Business District page that is managed by Local Works for us, and the application would be there. I would also like to say that with Christmas coming up, if we could please remember to shop small with all of our small shops here in Wheat Ridge and keep some of our money in our community. And then last and certainly not least, the reason why I don't have my voice today is because this weekend, all of the high school spirit teams in the state of Colorado competed in the CHASA state championships, and everybody competes in their division, so 2A, 3A, 4A, 5A. Wheat Ridge High School is a 4A school for football, therefore their spirit teams are 4A. Our cheer team finished third in the state, which is amazing because they have a new coach and about 75% of their girls are brand new. They did a great job. And then our Palms team finished first, and they are back-to-back state champions again this year. So I just wanted to tell my girls, congratulations, and I, you left it all on the stage and I left my whole voice there. See you all next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe, and congratulations. Ms. Davis?
I can't follow that with anything. Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I serve on the Wheat Ridge Business District Board at the pleasure of council, and I'm sorry, but I would like to resign my position from the Wheat Ridge Business District Board and invite people to apply online for that position, as Ms. Hoppe suggests.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pond.
Nothing more tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And if I understood Mr. DiTulio's request, he wanted, he wanted someone to read this from the podium.
Yes, you have the perfect radio voice.
Well, I'm not sure that I do, but I would like to read the announcement that Mr. Mr. DiTulio put forth. Wheat Ridge, Colorado, December 8, 2017. While internet retailers compete with local brick and mortar businesses, those that provide local delivery or otherwise have a physical presence in the Wheat Ridge must obtain local business licenses. They are also obligated to submit Wheat Ridge sales tax, and do, just like other local merchants, that have a physical address in the city. This is also true of other cities in Colorado. Those taxes produce the revenue needed for the city to provide valuable public services, funding, funding the Wheat Ridge Police Department, the maintenance of city streets, the creation and managing of parks and recreational opportunities, and to keep our city solvent. So that has to do with internet, taxing of internet sales and deliveries in our city. I have nothing, nothing further. I'd like to congratulate the lady farmers for, for a great show this weekend, and that having concluded, the business coming before the Wheat Ridge City Council for December 11th, 2017, I motion us adjourned.